Good evening, welcome to the regular Planning Commission meeting, Grand Blank Township, January 4th, 2018. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Planning Commission members present this evening, we have Mr. Mansour, Ms. Coulter, Mr. Goldie, Mr. Brown, Mr. Gellings, Mr. Banderski, Mr. Yancho, Mr. Horsia, and our new planner, Mr. Mark Lloyd. And then from our consultant, Giffles Webster, we have Mr. Roy. First item on our agenda is approval of this evening's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Support. Motion by Mr. Banderski, support by Mr. Mansour. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes eight zero. Next item will be approval of the minutes, regular meeting, December 7th, 2017. Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Chairman, I've gone through the minutes, and there's a couple of minor corrections, none of which change the intent of the meeting minutes. And so I would make a recommendation or a couple of minor changes that the minutes be approved.
Motion by Mr. Banderski, support by Mr. Brown. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes eight zero. Next item is an opportunity for public comment. See too much of the public here this evening. Is there anyone here that would like to address the Planning Commission about any item? Not, we'll close the public comment, go on to correspondence. This says Planning is only news, but we didn't receive one this month, I don't believe. That's just a standard. Under Old Business, we have sign ordinance discussion. Are you aware of anything on that, Mr. Roy?
I am.
Okay, we'll turn it over to you then.
Hopefully you received a draft for discussion in your packets.
Anyone received? No.
I did not.
Coulter, did you receive?
Oh, I have the one from November 7th.
Yes, it's the November, yeah, it's from November 2nd.
I weeded out when I thinned out my packet, so I didn't.
Okay. Well, we'll go over it, and obviously, this is not the final time you'll be talking about it. We'll just, I'll provide a brief overview, and then we can have a discussion, and then we'll come back with a additional draft for your next meeting unless you're, obviously, we'll need to ultimately set a public hearing for this, so how quickly you want to move with this. But just as a matter of introduction, there, I've got the mic going, so you can hear me. This item, I know there's been a number of discussions between Jill Bame and the Township Superintendent regarding enforcement of your existing ordinance, and also, there has been some case law and some other things that are impacting signs. And so this is a really good time to take a look at your sign ordinance and bring it up to date to address certain issues. The number one case from case law perspective is Reed versus Town and Gilbert, which is a landmark Supreme Court case that primarily focused on temporary signs. And essentially, what that case says is that if you're going to be regulating temporary signs, immunity in the country is now amending their sign ordinance because you have to make sure you are treating your temporary signs in a similar manner. And you also are having to remove a lot of content requirements. And it's our general recommendation, although there still is some discrepancy as to whether or not you have to remove all the content-based regulations out of commercial speech. For non-commercial speech, the case appears to tell you, yes, you should remove your content-based regulations. We think it's also a good idea, potentially because of that finding and the direction, because there wasn't necessarily 100% agreement on all those terms with the court. But going to more of a content-neutral ordinance seems to make sense. It seems to be going in the direction that the Supreme Court was suggesting as part of the Reed versus Gilbert. So you're going to see a number of amendments in here that move towards doing that. And it generally impacts temporary signs more than permanent anyway, and so we'll get into that in just a minute. You also have your new technology districts, the Tech Village and Tech Park districts. There's a need to, your current ordinance doesn't allow for projecting signs. And in a walkable environment, typically, you want to have signs, the blade signs that come off the front of the building, that are oriented more towards pedestrians. So those types of projecting signs are now going to be allowed in the district. And then finally, there's been some requests for additional signage for non-commercial, excuse me, non-residential districts that are located along I-75. Due to the faster-moving traffic, the desire to potentially increase the area. Right now, you're limited to 32 square feet in office districts and 75 square feet in commercial and industrial districts, regardless of that situation. And the suggestion here is to allow for up to 100 square feet if you're within 300 feet of I-75, and also allow for an additional height, up to eight feet in height. So-
Rod, if I may for a moment, just to build on what you're saying.
Yeah, sure.
With the zoning board of appeals, we've had a number of cases over the last year, well, actually years. But specifically what you're talking about with I-75 traffic and how fast it's traveling. And I think my colleagues know here that the zoning board of appeals met with McLaren Healthcare regarding their signage. And one of the things that Jill helped us with, they were more than 300 feet away from the right-of-way in I-75, and the zoning board of appeals did allow for a larger signage coverage on that building. So that's an example of what you're, I think we're talking about right there.
Yes.
So we've been dealing with it in that fashion. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and quite frankly, that's where a lot of ordinance amendments often have a genesis, is in the ZBA. If you find that there's multiple requests for a particular type of variance, that's usually at least a reason to take a look at it. Doesn't mean you're necessarily going to amend your ordinance, but it's certainly a reason to take a look at it. Moving on to page four of what was handed out, and that's signs permitted by district. This is where we're adding in Tech Village and projecting signs at the bottom. And the projecting signs, per the regulation, would be, they have to be at least eight feet above ground level, no closer than 20 feet to another such sign on the same floor, limited to 16 square feet, so roughly four feet by four feet. And then the maximum height would be four feet from the bottom edge of the sign. And then you get one per occupant at the street level. So that's to encourage in the village setting that pedestrian orientation, so that if you're a pedestrian, you can look ahead on the sidewalk and see the name of the business that's up ahead of you. So that's the primary intent of those signs. Moving on to page five, there would be a change under item 3A, which is the one we just talked about. Signs in non-residential districts that are within 300 feet of I-75 are permitted to have a maximum height of eight feet, and the maximum sign area permitted shall not exceed 100 square feet. So that calls those out in that particular area. Starting on page six is where we get into the temporary sign changes. There's a lot of strikeouts of existing, the special event signs, for example, all, you see a lot of strikeouts there. And what happens when we go to more of a content-neutral sign regulation is, actually, the sign regulations get a lot more simple in terms of the way they're presented, because you don't have as many classifications, they're all just temporary signs. And the other thing you're going to see when we come back with the final version of this is a number of your definitions are going to get taken out, too, that relate to these temporary signs, which also helps to simplify your ordinance. So temporary and permanent window signs is specifically called out being permitted in all non-residential districts, and they can occupy up to 25% of the total window glazed area of a given facade, regardless of whether they're temporary or permanent. So you know, some window signs are permanent, some are temporary. This just pretty much says you get 25% of the glazed area. And that is actually an increase over your current ordinance, which calls for a 10% of total glazed area. We're finding that 25 is really more, what more communities are doing, 10% is pretty restrictive. So that's something for you to think about, but we see that as being more the common standard for 25% of the glazed area. We also like a provision that gives some appreciation for a certain type of signage in the windows that you've, if you've ever seen, a lot of times along a window, along the bottom edge, you'll see etched or applied lettering that has, you know, simple information, you know, might be the name of the restaurant, it might be their hours of operation. We want to encourage those things that are applied in that type of fashion and not just taped onto the window. And so there's actually a provision in here that would allow for you to have a lower eight inches of the window, a sign, as long as it doesn't exceed 80% of the window width, and it would not exceed .5 square feet per lineal feet of building frontage. So it just allows for a little additional sign, and that doesn't count towards your 25%. And it's just a way of encouraging quality signage along the bottom of the windows. And then you'll see temporary signs, there's a whole bunch of them, dealing with elections and sale or lease, that gets taken out. And it all pretty much gets replaced into this simplified table on page eight, which is specific regulations for temporary freestanding and temporary wall signs. And so if you're in a single-family district, you have a provision here where you would get a maximum area of 10 square feet, but no individual sign can be greater than six square feet, which is what you currently would allow for. And the maximum height is four feet. It also allows for potentially a wall sign up to six square feet in single-family residential. Those would typically only apply, you know, people could use it for anything, it's not going to be content-based, but a lot of times, a home-based business, or it could be something similar to that, it could be just an expression of a viewpoint. You know, those are things that could potentially occur within that. Multiple-family goes up to 32 square feet is the total with no sign exceeding 16 square feet. And then non-residential uses in residential districts and non-residential uses in other districts are also called out for, too. And the nuance of this is, how do we address the special demands of political signs as well as real estate signs? Those are usually the most challenging. And because we're no longer regulating on content, what we do is, there's, item number B here says that in recognition that there is a need for additional expression of speech prior to a scheduled election, the following would apply for a period of 60 days prior to, until three days after, a designated election day on which there is at least one valid item. And then in that case, the maximum allowable sign area would increase to 64 square feet in all districts.
Question?
Sure.
The chart kind of distinguishes between single-family residential and multiple-family residential, but I'm thinking of, you know, the situation where you have the single-family attached units.
Mm-hmm.
It seems like those should be treated similarly to, you know, the single-family residential.
To what?
It seems to me they should be treated the same as, you know, the single-family detached homes in the single-family residential district. But if they're attached, right, they're in the multi-family district?
Not necessarily. You can still have attached single-family, depending upon how it's defined.
Yeah, typically here-
Wouldn't that fall in-
Yeah, typically here, we've been in multiple-family-
Wouldn't that fall in multiple-family zoning?
But you allow for attached single-family through options in your single-family districts.
Yeah.
Yes.
But I'm thinking of the single-family attached in a multiple-family residential district under this chart would be, you know, treated differently.
We could clarify that single-family attached would be, we could add that under, yeah, that's a good suggestion.
Attached units, and they surely should be treated the same when it comes to temporary signs.
Yeah, I think that, we could clarify that, that's a good point. Next, thank you. So the idea here is, and right now, I think your regulation says 30 days prior to election, so this would actually be a little bit more permissive, would allow 60 days, so something to think about. We're seeing more communities allowing for that additional time for signage to go 60 days prior to an election, so that's just something to think about. We're suggesting it just because we're seeing more and more communities doing that. And the 64 square feet is, your maximum area is still in play. So if you're in single-family, you still, the maximum size of any sign is still six square feet. However, you can have up to 64 square feet total. What that allows you to do is have, you know, approximately 10 signs during election season for different viewpoints, because you may want to put a sign out for school board, you may want to put one out for, so, and it doesn't limit the total number of signs. So you have multiple ways to express your different opinions that you want to express. But it still keeps the sign area under control in terms of not having a single sign greater than six square feet. Same thing with, well, let me go one at a time here. And the next one deals with temporary banners and temporary signs mounted on walls. And that's going to be in non-residential districts, limited to a total of 28 days per year, and can't be displayed for a continuous period greater than 14 days. This typically would replace your regulations dealing with grand opening signs and special event signs. You can have those go up, but instead of calling them out by content, you're calling them out according to the type of sign they are. So it would allow for someone to do that, or if they're having some type of special event, they could put those signs up. There's some requirements for appearance and for construction standards related to the temporary signs, making sure they're durable, all-weather materials are used, and they're kept in good repair. And then there's also provisions for when a building or land area on a zoning lot is listed for lease, the maximum time for temporary display and temporary signs mounted on buildings shall be 90 days. When all or a portion of a building or land area on a zoning lot is listed for sale, the maximum display time of temporary signs for all uses and temporary signs mounted on buildings for all uses shall be the duration the building, building unit, or land is listed for sale.
Another question there.
Yes.
That 90-day limit for, you know, lease signs seems pretty restrictive.
Well, yeah, I need to explain what the idea behind that is. One thing we keep hearing from many communities is that the for-lease signs go up and they never come down. Okay? And what happens is, they tend to deteriorate in terms of quality, they're not kept up to date, they're not maintained. This says that you can't have it up for more than 90 days. But what could happen is, you could then replace it with another sign. And so it requires you to be aware of maintenance and not stick the same sign up and have it there all the time, if you're doing a for-lease product. So that's the idea behind it. It's just, it's really, it's rooted in the maintenance issues that communities are facing with for-lease signs that never come down. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, because I was worried, you know, there'd be a lot of instances where a property could remain, you know, for lease for more than 90 days.
Oh, sure, well, yeah. And many, yeah, and there's some pretty clever folks that'll tell you, there's always something for lease in their building, and, you know, so it's a good way to address that maintenance issue. And then under page 10, prohibited signs, signs, we're just clarifying here that signs that are designed to flutter or move with the wind by any means, including feather, blade, and flutter signs are, in fact, prohibited signs. I know you have those things pop up every once in a while, and we're making clear that those, in fact, are prohibited signs. But we're also taking off the projecting signs as being prohibited signs, just because of the regulations that we already added in the Tech Village District. And then, as I mentioned, we're going to be removing several definitions, including the definition of real estate sign, real estate development sign, real estate residential identification signs, garage and auction sale signs, construction signs, all of those things now are regulated as to whether or not they're temporary or permanent, because those definitions are no longer needed. So that will be coming back as well in the final draft. Any other comments?
The projecting signs, where do you see those being viewed from? Is that from a sidewalk, walking underneath a canopy, or?
Primarily sidewalk, although you certainly can see them from the road as you're driving by. The idea is, if you're in a village setting like Tech Village, the speed limit's low anyway, and as you're driving by, you probably can notice those signs, but they're really primarily oriented towards the pedestrian on the sidewalk.
I guess I was just questioning 16 square, a little bit big to me, that's all, just a comment.
It provides for, there are some communities that I would say there's a range, some allow smaller, some allow bigger. That's four feet by four feet, obviously. It provides for some creativity, it provides the opportunity to make it available and to sometimes, sometimes what we're seeing, too, is a lot of times, the way your ordinance works and most ordinances work, you have to draw a rectangle around it. With these projecting signs, we're seeing some interesting parts stick out like a spoon or, you know, something like that, and it allows for creativity in the sign, where the sign may not appear to be 16 square feet in total area, but it has a few elements sticking out, that allows it to still go forward and not be penalized for being creative.
What's the proposal on the maximum distance it projects?
It, I don't think-
There was a height limit.
There's a height limit, but there's not a projection.
Did you make it one foot tall and 16 feet off the building? That's why I'm just-
You know, that's a good point. We probably should have, usually, we like to put in a regulation that keeps it a certain feet from the back of the curb or the edge of the roadway. And that becomes the restrict, because usually, in a urban or a village-type setting, you're just going to have the sidewalk that leads right up to a curb and then on-street parking. And so generally, you want to have it so that it doesn't get into the area where you're getting into the roadway itself, where you have moving traffic. And so typically, it's like four feet from the back of the curb or something like that would be as far as you would want it, and we can add something, that's a good point.
I think if we were going to do that, we'd also want to see some graphics that show what that might look like, because your point of it being a foot tall and 16 feet wide, a little outrageous, but still, just the same, it's a very good point.
It's in the regulations, it tells us.
Yeah, and so I'm not so sure that I would say to the back of the roadway or the curb, either, because that could be a ways away.
No, what you're saying, four feet short.
So, yeah, we'd want it to, I think we'd want to limit it by an actual dimension, probably.
Ratio?
You could give it a ratio.
Yeah, I think we'd want to look at that like that-
Yeah, we could do that.
And show you guys what that would look like.
Yeah, we'll come back with some examples of that.
I guess I've got a follow-up question. Does our ordinance say it has to fit within one rectangle?
Yes, but no, it doesn't have to be necessarily one. It could be-
I was thinking it was, it could be, just depending on the sign, it could be multiple rectangles to get your square foot.
That's how we calculate them now.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if it says the, some long word, in pub, you're measuring the, and then the next one, and then that one, that rectangle around everything.
Right.
Like I said, my initial reaction, 16 might be big, but just-
Okay, well, and then, yeah, give it some thought, and you can always reduce it if you want. But we'll try to come back with a couple of examples.
Any other questions for Mr. Roy?
Yes, I do have a question, and that's, when are we going to talk about our homework assignment?
Sounds like somebody did their homework.
We were supposed to look at signs and-
Or, no, it's in the-
Especially for 75 corridor and-
Caught you by surprise.
I went up, up the corridor and down the corridor, Holly Road, and, well, there is a good variance, and-
Ready to do a field study.
One of the things on, along the expressway, is the fact that you've got the standard billboard, then you've got one that's probably three floors high, much higher than the standard. And you have one on the west side of 75 at Bristol Road going north that reaches to heaven. It's so big, I couldn't read it in detail, but I think it's home mortgage or something. But it's massive. And I thought to myself, you know, if there were more signs like that, it would really be obnoxious.
Yeah, it is.
And then there's, you know, the monument signs, and I've talked about this one before, there's some that are good-looking but not functional. And the one that comes to mind most is Regency Parkway. Two nice cement arcs and four plates with the names of the businesses on each side. And today, there's, a bush is at the bottom, snow on top that exceeds the height of the signs that define the businesses. So I consider that one a completely non-functional, because even without the snow, driving by, you cannot really read what's in there. And then, last night, I went down to Rose Point, it was dark, but the one thing I noticed, most of the big commercial buildings adjacent to 75 had large signs at the top, which were very legible because of the size. I don't know what size they were, but there was no problems understanding what that building was. And so, building, well, like locally, the McLaren headquarters, there is a monument, small monument sign by the parking lot, which you can't see from the expressway, but you can certainly read that as the headquarters. So there's, there is quite a variance that we have in our area, although on 75, going from Holly Road north or south, there are very few signs, because there's no industry along that till you get to about Bristol Road. Just before Bristol Road, you start seeing the, what do I call the, large, standard-size-
Billboard?
Billboards.
Billboards, yes, thank you. You start seeing billboards as you approach.
Which we really have no control over, right? I mean, the billboards are within the, well, I would-
You have control, yeah, you still have control over billboards, you can still regulate them, yes.
But we don't have any in our state, do we?
I say any, at least I don't remember.
Absolutely.
Well, we actually had a case that we went to court on with a billboard sign for a auto dealership right there-
At what?
At Holly Road and I-75, southbound. And it was actually for the dealership was further south at the other Holly Road. And we lost. Along those lines, I got communication from our attorney, Mr. Alati, today, where he was successful in winning a case on a-
where he was successful in winning a case on a, an abandoned large billboard sign.
Pepperwood?
At, you know, Pepperwood and, which has just been an eyesore for a number of years because the developer, there's nothing more to develop there, but they never took the signage down. So I wonder, that, that was a successful case there, which turned out good, at least from my perspective. And where else can we apply that within the community for abandoned signs that are eyesores?
The ordinance provides for removal.
Yeah, it does, right.
So that's, and that's, and that, what you're doing is the right thing. You're enforcing it when people aren't doing it and you're being successful. So that'll send a message that the township's not going to ignore it.
And the, and the finding was that the, the developer will bear the cost of removal of that sign. And if not, it'll be put on the tax rolls for that property, the cost of having it removed. And there is a deadline of June thirtieth.
It's good, that was a good.
So it's a very positive outcome.
Absolutely.
And so where, where are we going with all this profound knowledge?
Well, and that's, it's a good question. And I would suggest that since this is gonna come back for your next meeting, that if you've got any comments on your homework that you would like to share, one, either do it by email prior to the meeting, that would be preferable. And send it, you can send it to both Jill and to, and to Mark, just so everybody's got that information. Or at, at, at least bring it to the meeting. If you can do it before, that would be really helpful. But otherwise, bring it to the meeting and we can have additional discussion when we bring back the, the next draft.
I did take some pictures, although in several cases, it was hard and it threw a car. But I drove up TriPoint Parkway there by Elroy, Alloy Steel. And there's three or four major building, manufacturing facilities there. And I think three of the four had a nice monument sign and no signage on the building. So, I mean, it was very obvious what the building was. Because we've talked about signs on buildings and then monument signs and do we need both? But those buildings in there, that monument sign does the job.
I would agree.
And then we have the, the signs at, on Holly Road, there at the Bagels Place. That entranceway there and the one a little bit further south. Two great big monument signs which far exceed, I think, our, our standard, which made me think they were there before the sign.
Actually, that came before the zoning board of appeals several years ago. Because the tenants in there were getting no visibility and, and customers or patients or whatever it might be, didn't, were having difficulty in finding them there in, in that development. And so the zoning board of appeals did provide a variance on that for adding additional tenant signage. So I know exactly what you're talking about.
I'm thinking of the ones at the road, not the tenant signage.
Oh, no, I'm talking about at the road, at the entrance. That's where I was referring to.
Blame that.
I think that.
Yeah, blame that.
As, as we make better use of technology, as our cars and our cellphones are more advanced, I think that relieves some of the benefit of having that monument sign at the edge of the road. And I think we're gonna continue to see an advancement in that. And so, I did some homework as well. I think there's some glaring differences in some of the signs that we see throughout the community. The biggest, one of the biggest contrasts is between McCandless Road and Warwick Hills. The, on Saginaw Street, the east side of the road has all elevated signs. And on the west side of the road, it's all monument signs. The buildings are larger and the monument signs are further apart. But it's a, it's a dramatic difference to look at that section of road and see what the east side looks like versus the west side. But the other big difference is on Holly Road, between the city limits and the expressway. All those new buildings, they all have very small monument signs. And some of the ones like Buffalo Wild Wings, Bagger Dave's, Culvers, they rely more on the building signs. And I think that it makes a clearer visibility and a cleaner look as you drive by. But I think it's also safer because when you're turning out of those businesses, you don't have monument signs obstructing your view.
Culver has one because they have a menu, lighted menu there, but.
They do have one on the building too.
Two, two other things, two other comments. The Nissan facility there on McCandless and Holly, they have a monument sign that just says Nissan in their logo. Which, you know, it struck me kinda funny because you can see the dealership from any direction you're coming. And it's no, there's no question that it's Nissan. But usually monument signs, you have an address or, you know, something else. That one is just the Nissan logo and the word Nissan. The other one is Spud.
That's great.
Yeah, they have the big one in front. But as I drive up to that, I really don't see it until I get almost perpendicular to it. Spud Software.
And doesn't it say, refreshment, I've been by there a thousand times. Didn't we allow some signage on the top, front of the facade of the building as well? Seems like I've been by there, I mean.
Yes.
All of us have, I think there's signage there that says Spud Software as well.
I'll have to go back and look because I, you know, that's a big, big sign that they have.
Yeah.
But it's, to me, it's not very functional. Unless you know that it's in that general ballpark. Okay.
Speaking of the car dealership, the Nissan, if you contrast that building and the BMW dealership, which has very few self-supporting signs, all their signage is pretty much on the building itself. And if you contrast that with the, the Sarah roadway there, it's a huge difference. And much cleaner. Yet, yet it still informs the public and their customers of where to go, where's the body shop, where's the service bay.
A lot of Sarah signs were grandfathered in.
Oh, Grand Blanc does have a monument sign. It's a nice looking one.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty, it's not very big.
No.
And they have a lot of frontage there.
Yeah. Well, the bottom line is there is a lot of variation. And to Rod's point, we're gonna have to all be in agreement in terms of what we think we want this community to look like as compared to, we, somebody wants this because Burton has it or, you know, Flint Township has it and so forth.
Well, the tough, tough thing in my mind is regulating taste. How do you do that? So you try to be as uniform as you can from a signage standpoint. But someone's always got some creative or unique way to come up with something that wasn't really your intent, it seems like.
But I looked at that and tried to make those judgments in my mind because that was the homework assignment we got from Jill. She, in there, talks about garish signs, good-looking signs and so forth. And I agree with you, I mean, you can't regulate taste. All you can do is share an opinion.
But it's good to point out, hey, I don't like this because is there something that we should be tweaking?
Well, I'm sure every, every board member has a different perspective on exactly what you're saying. Is what's, you know, pleasing to the eye and what's not. And as well as being informative.
Well, then, the, the other one on Saginaw Road is the Augusta Park. One and two, or whatever they call it, north and south, Augusta Park, north and south. So there's one monument, large, I won't, I won't say large, but one monument sign for each of the two buildings. And I don't, didn't really notice a lot of signage or any signage on the buildings other than for the individual.
Small identification.
Office areas.
Probably a matter of the use where.
Typically, office uses don't require significant, you, you, you're in an office built, park or an office building and you, you look for the name of that building. You don't necessarily look for the use like you would with a retail store necessarily. And people tend, or tend to, that's why those sign regulations are typically, typically different in an office district versus a retail district because the, the demands and the functionality is different. So that, that's pretty common.
But even within that, if you go up and down Saginaw Street, there are some offices which they allow each of the tenants to have a, a slot, so to speak, in the way.
Sure.
And contrast that with the Augusta, which is, you know, only tenants have their little slots by their doors. So, I mean, I think that the, that what we're doing here and what you've done in the packet, although I haven't been able to find it, is to identify different tiers, different types of signs. And I think we ought to be able to kind of envision those and accommodate all those. And especially, I think, with respect to the homework assignment, that information is particularly useful for the master plan. To give some visualization to some of the signage that we ought to be kind of promoting or, or suggesting in a master plan. I mean, I particularly like the, the monument signs. And I've seen a number of them down in Auburn Hills where I work, quite tasteful and, and varied. But they have a kind of a, you can tell they're monuments, they got a name and then some kind of thing around them. So, and that will help, I think, tie in a theme for the, the township as well.
One that was surprising to me on Holly Road was Merrill Lynch. Their building sits back the way, and there's no monument sign there. It's just the wording on the building, which I thought was, you know, that, you know, looks good. They apparently don't need the monument sign. And if they don't need one, it's best not to have something there that, to your point, it looks, you see all this other stuff that adds to the disruption of the aestheticness of the, what we're trying to achieve.
One of the first ones to go in.
Yes.
Okay, so what's the proposal here? Do we, schedule a public hearing or take a look at this?
I don't, I mean, you decide, but it doesn't seem to me that you're ready to do a public hearing yet. I would think you'd come back with a reworked.
Yeah, I would say maybe let's do one more, one more draft for you to look at. And, and then I would try to maybe look at setting the public hearing for March.
I would also suggest, if we can, that we get whatever this next draft would be to include some additional graphics that we'd have the ability to look at and have a better, a definite understanding of what it is we're talking about. That way, there's just no guesswork, you know, we see it, there it is, we see what they, what we're meaning.
Sure.
Gonna move on from there?
Sure, so we will have a new draft for your February meeting. Okay, thank you for your input.
Speaking of February, do we know whether the gas station's coming back in February?
Are you talking about for?
Sam's coming.
For the, the PUD that recently got amended? No, I don't think they're ready to come back in February.
I know it, it was gonna be a very short timeframe, I was just curious whether they were coming back.
Yeah, well, they haven't brought anything back to us.
Because they had to be, be in by like January eighth or something.
Yeah, you know, got a day or two, but I haven't seen it.
New business, master plan update?
Yes, once again, I think hopefully, I don't know if everybody got everything in the packet. It did go out, I think there's a, from December, there's a proposal of a scope of services for your master plan, and I thought I would go through that.
Anybody wanna come?
Yeah, I don't. This is just one I happen to run a copy for. I know Rod very well and I'm sitting at my question.
Well, as, as you're aware, it's been a while since you've done really a comprehensive master plan update. You've done some modest amendments, you've done the Tech Village component. But stepping back and actually taking a look at the township as a whole and doing a, a comprehensive master plan, it's, it's been, it's been, it's been quite a long time. And we thought it might be helpful to put together a, basically a proposed scope to discuss with you to see if you think we're heading in the right direction in terms of the work that needs to be done and kind of give you our thought process as to what this project would entail. So on page three, we talk about some objectives of the planning process. As you know, you're required every five years to review your plan. And then you determine what you're going to do at that point after you've reviewed it, whether you're going to do a, a minor update or a comprehensive update or just keep it as it is. Now, as we look at these planning process objectives, one, we think encouraging public participation is very important for the process. And we want to include even more tools than we have in the past. We've created some, some additional tools that invite folks that may not necessarily traditionally participate in a master plan process by allowing for some electronic communications. And we're trying to get a broader scope of participation from, from people in the township. So I'll talk about that in a minute. So public participation, we think, is very important. And we wanna make sure we afford all members of the community to participate. We wanna explore key planning topics. And we've identified those as housing, land use, community health, and what it means to be an age-friendly community. Your community, like pretty much every community in the country, is, is, is aging. It seems like that's the predominant trend. And that presents potential planning challenges for you. And for example, we see a lot more demand for certain types of housing that is specifically designed to match an aging population. There may be other services, other recreational needs, other even commercial needs that need to be reflected. So that's certainly a trend that needs to be considered as part of any master plan update. And we also think it's important to have actionable strategies. So when you've created your plan, you have a roadmap on how to implement it. And we wanna do, when it's all done, we want you to feel like, okay, we know what we need to be doing and have that roadmap in place, who's responsible for what actions and whether they're short-term or long-term. I know you've, you've been good about revisiting your master plan on a fairly frequent basis and trying to implement it. You're, I think you're better than most. And we wanna actually give you the tools so you can be even better at, at doing that, so.
Rod, if I may, certainly when Technology Village was thought about seven, eight, nine, ten years ago, we, we had, whatever it's been, it's been quite a while. You know, we did have that in the master plan. But I think it's critically important that we articulate exactly what you're talking about for this, this particular master plan document. Because we want developers who wanna participate in the development of, of something like the Tech Village to know precisely what we want and expect out of them.
Absolutely.
From a zoning standpoint and all of that. And I know we've talked about this quite a bit. And I think that's a big, big, important piece for our vision for the future.
I agree, it, it, it sets the tone of what your expectation is. And Grand Blanc has always presented itself as a premier community and wanting to include premier elements to, to set it apart. And that's been a theme of some of your master plan work in the past. And I know that, I'm assuming you wanna, you wanna maintain that and provide guidance to developers that are coming here as to what your vision is and include that. And that's one of the key things that the master plan will do for you. So I, I, I agree with that. Moving on to the fourth page, we go into some of the public input provisions, including the, the visioning process. One of the things that we like to do, and we're involved in that in, in several of the master plans we're working on now, is to do, kind of kick off the master plan a little bit differently than we've done in the past. We want to. We want to rely upon the talents you have here in with your township staff. Um, we want to ask them their opinion about the master plan and what they see as being um important issues that we should be aware of. So we want to include them in terms of uh asking questions about key issues and getting them to respond before we start the master plan process. Um, we also want to have a survey of the Township Board and the Planning Commission so that you can ask, be asked certain questions, and then we can get together and actually have a joint meeting um where we talk about planning issues before you kick off the full master plan update. Uh, because we think when the Planning Commission and the Township Board can meet together and talk about planning issues, and the Planning Commission has that type of input, it will make the product um the best it can be because you're getting the input from all of the key bodies that are involved in in making land use decisions. And then ultimately, when you get to the end, I, the Township Board will know and be aware of the process and can hopefully participate throughout the process. And when the product's done and then um they see the master plan, it's going to reflect a unified vision. Cause that's really what you want, is a unified vision um for the township that both the Planning Commission and the Township Board can support. So we want to do some things upfront to help facilitate that, and that's where the joint meeting um we think is is an important way of of kicking that off. So we would um prepare a resource packet, cause another thing that we think is helpful is we see a lot of planning trends out there, and we do a lot of research and we clip a lot of articles. We want to put together a packet for you that you would have before that meeting, so you can read through that. You may not, it may be, usually it's pretty long and you're not necessarily gonna maybe read every single word, but you might skim through it and glean some ideas and concepts that you think are important. So we would like to be in a position to provide that to you and let you um review that prior to going through the process. So um that's part of the the visioning process that would would start off the master plan. And then we talk about public engagement um starting on page six. And so we want to do a survey that would go out to the general public as well. Um, once again, there would be some hard copies available here at the township for those who are not um necessarily comfortable using a computer, but it would be a computer-based survey. Um, we also have a crowdsourced um G I S-based application called Picture This, which is a way where someone can, with their smartphone, if they're driving around the community, and they want to share a photograph of something they think is really great or not so great that should, could be better, they can take a picture of it and locate it right on a map within the township as to where it is, and then they can write comments about why they think this is a great asset within the community or why this is something that maybe needs some work. And so uh it's called Picture This. We're using this in several of our communities right now. We're doing a Rochester Hills Master Plan Update. We're doing one in DeWitt Township. We're doing um a sign ordinance for Ann Arbor. We're actually using it um with that particular product. Um, and it's a great way. It's an online platform. You can be on your computer or you can be on your phone and you can take a picture of something. And it could be somewhere else in another community. Maybe this is something that's missing here that we need here. Someone could do that and say, hey, uh, we want to share this. So that's that's a, I I think, a way to get some people involved in the process where they may not necessarily typically be involved in the process.
I have a question. Have you ever had any communities that have tried to do like a, put um, set up like a random sample of the community rather than just, you know, doing a survey and asking people to respond, and so the only responses you get are people that are motivated for one. And as opposed to the idea of, you know, trying to do a random sample of the community?
Um, yes, we have um done that. I will tell you, my experience is that there isn't a significant, if any, real difference between the responses we tend to get from the from the random sample surveys and from um the more open-ended ones. I think the key to the open-ended surveys is for everyone here and everyone on the Township Board to get the word out so you get the broadest cross-section of the community participating in the survey. Because that's where you, the, we find the success is in the numbers. When we only get a hundred or two hundred responses, then it's, it, that's not a lot. But when you're getting three hundred or four hundred, then you're starting to see real participation. And then a lot of those those edges start to smooth out and you're getting more of a representation. The other thing, it's coming more and more difficult with with um with random sample surveys is the um the use of cell phones. Cause it used to be random sample surveys were done by getting into the phone book and randomly selecting. Now, cell phones, you don't even know, people might have area codes from California and they live here. You know, nothing matches anymore. There's no, some have two four eight, some have eight one oh, some have five eight six. It's all over the place. And that whole random sample element's become much more challenging. I'd say, that doesn't mean it can't be done. Um, but it it is um a little bit different now with, particularly when you're doing phone-based surveys. Um, but I I guess that, that, we've always been um encouraged multiple ways of getting the word out that the survey's available. And sometimes you have to keep doing it. We'll see the response rates low and we'll say, hey, go out to every community organization you know. Spread the word, here's the link, get it out, and when the numbers are high enough, then then you feel more confident in the results.
It seems like, you know, you get inundated with, you know, so many emails and everything else.
You do.
And if somebody sees a survey, then, you know, they might not pay much attention to it, whereas if they were like directly asked, you know.
Exactly.
Then you'll get the.
Yeah, you go buy a piece of gum and you get a survey. How'd we do it, you know, the Walmart or the C V S or whatever, you know, everyone wants the survey. So, yeah, if somebody, you're all influencers in the community, you know a lot of people. If you reach out to all your, ten of your friends and say, look, this is important. Please tell your friends that this survey's out there and it's important to the township. When they get that personal invitation, that will make a difference. And if the Township Board does the same thing and the Z B A does the same thing and other community groups do, then you'll start to see more participation, cause there's nothing like a personal invitation. I would agree.
So in terms of generating interest in that in the public, in the public arena, and I'd also um want to extend that to the business community as well.
Absolutely.
Have you ever, have you ever done anything where you actually um have a, like a big notice and kind of, not saying an open house, but kind of a thing that kind of draws people into, I don't know, this place or the police station or something and kind of generate a little bit of um uh, you know, energy around that?
Yes, in fact, um, that's two more steps. I'm almost there. Absolutely. We have the community, community kiosks, which is another um idea of creating posters that would be available at high-visibility locations within the township to let people know this process is going on. And then the other option, or not option, but the other uh component is the public open house. Um, and we've done this here before, many, several times, um where we set up stations. And we, basically, we create these large posters for the various topic areas, and we have them around the room. We invite the public, uh, and we have them come in, and we usually have a planning commissioner at each station, and then our staff is here as well to to assist. Uh, and we, and we have them engaged with the different topic areas, and we usually have small questionnaires for them to fill out. And we have that one-on-one conversation with planning commissioners as well, which I think is really helpful. Uh, I I think it's been a benefit to the to the projects we've done before, and we would certainly um recommend doing that this time as well. So absolutely, and try to get a little energy going and get some ideas. We, you know, we want to hear fresh ideas. We want to hear what people really think about the future of the township. And i- and if you get people talking, it's even better than a survey sometimes because once the conversations start, then you get those ideas flowing and people can actually respond, and then it can grow into something different.
I, the turnout when we've done those has been frankly better than what I expected initially.
We've had some pretty good turnout, actually. Yeah, I would, I would agree. I mean, always want to see more. But um, once again, it's getting the word out and letting people know that it's important for them to come. So that's, that's um, that's the um, the other major component of the pub, of the public input process in addition to, obviously, there'll be a public hearing. Now, the work program itself starts on page nine. So we would do the kickoff. Uh, we would have uh, we would have uh, the project website would be developed, which would allow people to um keep tabs on what's happening on a regular basis um through the website. We would have the notices that have to go out to the various entities. And then we would end up defining a communications plan where we would end up keeping everyone posted on what's happening. The nice thing about having the website is they can see uh drafts um of work that's been done, and they can also see a schedule of what's coming, so people can always know to go to the website to get that information. Task two is the existing conditions analysis. That's where we look at economic housing, demographic data, updating land use elements, natural features, discussing with the Planning Commission about um that information and pulling that all together as a summary of those existing conditions. We also would update the market analysis. There was a market analysis done as part of the Tech Village project, um working with our partner, the Chesapeake Group. We would have them update um that information so that we have current um market data that we can look at in terms of trends, industry trends, um, and um what's happening in the various um sectors that were evaluated as part of of that study. Um, the task four is the housing and neighborhood plan. This is where we'd start to look at these existing conditions, these population trends, market information, and start to look at, do you need to look at some other types of housing? Um, maybe looking at different types of residential districts, modifying um certain residential areas to um maybe be be able to accommodate different housing types to meet your changes in in population. Um, these are all things to explore uh and for you to make a decision on what you think um are the best um modifications to make with the, in those housing and neighborhood plans. We will bring to you different ideas, different trends, things that are um happening in other parts of the state and other parts of the country, um, looking at those housing trends and let you respond to that. And then we will make appropriate changes and include those in the housing and neighborhood plan. Uh, the other thing we would do that we did with your last comprehensive master plan is we would do a uh a build-out analysis, looking at what the community will look like at build-out based upon your recommendations. And then item number five is an important part of this process called redevelopment strategy and plan. And what we want to do is make sure that your master plan is consistent with the redevelopment-ready um guidelines that are coming from M E D C. Because being redevelopment-ready uh is an important component. Most communities are starting to move towards that process, which will allow you to take advantage of um some financial incentives potentially in targeting of of resources if you're in the redevelopment-ready process. And one of the requirements is that you identify um three redevelopment areas and explore um what might happen within those redevelopment areas. And so what we would do is based on the information collected to date, we would help you identify those three areas. We would develop some concept sketches um for what those areas might look like so that there can be some type of physical plan envisioned for those areas and include that within within the redevelopment strategy. Yes.
I just did a flashback. When I was in college.
It's many years.
It was a couple of years ago.
One of the classes that I had, you know, when I was in college, and I don't know if this would work with the local college, we went to, every couple of weeks, to a different area. And the students sketched up ideas on how to improve or redevelop some of the those areas. I don't know if there's anything worth pursuing from that standpoint. Any classes at the local college?
I don't know. Yeah, I mean, if we can get some students involved in the process, I think it'd be great. If there's a way to do that, we could certainly try to reach out and see if anyone is interested. I, yeah, I'd love to have the participation. Be good for them and good for us, good for everybody. Um, certainly something worth pursuing. What we, what we would typically do is we do um, and you've seen some of the work that we've done before on the sketch-up drawings where we do the the three D renderings of of different um concepts, and we would want to include those. And if we can include others, and we can have some others participating, that would be fantastic.
So Rod, when we, as an example, we've had the Saginaw, Saginaw Street corridor from the point down here to Door Highway to Maple Road. Isn't that basically what we've been attempting to do, to redevelop this area in in some fashion?
That's one of your target areas. You've had, you've had that identified, and that might be
For a long time.
For a long time, and you may continue that as one of your redevelopment areas.
Yeah.
Um, and you, what you might want to do potentially is focus in on a smaller component of that and make that a more, obviously, the corridor's a long corridor, but actually focusing in on one or two actual redevelopment sites and diving in deeper into those. That, that's probably what's, would come out of this, is identifying the corridors, an important corridor, and reiterating some of that work, but also diving in a little bit more on on an individual um parcel or two.
Actually, if we do that, we may want to look at whether we need the separate, you know, Hill Road corridor and Saginaw Street corridor plans that have been on the books for years, I guess.
Sure. The Hill Road one, I think, some of them need to be refreshed, I think. You know, they've been around a long time and it, some of them probably need some refreshing. So I guess that would be a question to you if you, if you want to actually include specific corridor elements in the scope. And Hill Road, yeah. Saginaw is is, has been updated more recently, but Hill Road really hasn't. The Hill, well, Saginaw North has been. The Saginaw South and the Hill, uh, Hill Road corridor and the Baldwin-Holly area hasn't really been um visited in a long time.
I'm just wondering whether we need them at all, or whether we should just apply the same.
Well, that's, that's true.
So I, I have a question. You mentioned three areas, so you kind of think about those as contiguous areas?
Three separate, three distinct areas.
Distinct areas. And so that kind of ties in this whole corridor thing, right? You can call each area a corridor, an area, and then do rifle shots within that, I suppose.
I I think you could do that, sure. You could, you could be generalized in the corridor. Um, and and then you may drill down on a specific site or two within the corridor to do some more refined, a concept of what, for example, you would, you could show on one parcel what you're really trying to reflect for the rest of the corridor as an example. So, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Well, if I could, I would add, at a minimum, I think somehow we ought to address the issue as we work through this master plan of the corridors that we have Hill and Saginaw. And and at, at a minimum, we could end up with, let's say Saginaw, we decide to keep it and and update it, brush it off, make it, refresh it as you, as, or even Hill. But have those as goals and objectives of the master plan and and not necessarily try to tackle that during the time you're doing the master plan. But have those as 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 components, if you will, goals of the master plan that you might want to take on subsequent to to completing the master plan process. Cause they're a different animal, corridor studies.
Yeah, they are, and these could be, it's, typically, you do those separately, just like the Saginaw North one. We did that as a separate study, cause it's much more involved and you, you get more particip, you'll get more people who are interested in that corridor coming out to participate just in a corridor study for that area than you would the master plan in general, you know, so. But we could certainly have some direction. I think we could have some, like a, like, like Mark mentioned, the the goals and objectives and an initial look, maybe at the, if if those, if we, if you picked a redevelopment site along each one of those corridors as part of this process, it might set the tone for where you're going. So you might pick one on Saginaw, one Hill, and maybe one on Baldwin. I don't know, or maybe two. Sag, one Saginaw North, one Saginaw South, and one on Hill. Maybe you would do that. And we could then use that as a kind of a a basis for ultimately going back and looking at those corridor studies after this, if you feel it's appropriate or not.
Isn't Hill Road kind of pretty well built, Hill built out?
It is, but there's been discussion that there may be um redevelopment along that corridor as well. And if you look at the previous plans, I think a lot of them have envisioned that potentially there could be uh some redevelopment. And I guess that's a question whether you want to encourage that or not. That's something we'll just, we'll work on during the master plan and whether or not you think it's appropriate or not. These are all, these are key policy decisions that you look at in a master plan. Are you satisfied with the corridor as it is? Do you want minor tweaks, or do you think it's ripe for a wholesale change?
Well, I know over the years with Hill Road, we've talked about the fact that, you know, you've got residential on on two sides that are in the most westerly por, portion of Hill Road. But you've, we've also seen right now with the redevelopment where uh some of that residential has now turned into commercial, meaning that new Taco Bell and the new um. that residential has now turned into commercial, meaning that new Taco Bell and the new Starbucks, and I don't know what the third one is right now, but I could even see that happening on the north side of Hill Road, where all that is currently residential and has been for decades. And I'm talking about the part that's between I-475 and Fenton Road. That's what I'm specifically thinking.
Right. That's what I think.
Ms. Coulter brings up a good point. I think we, some of these corridors have been there for a long time. We saw some elements that we liked in those corridors, and we kind of merged that into our general ordinance. So I don't think there's that much difference now in some cases for those corridors compared to our general ordinance anymore.
I think you're right. And it makes it easier to administer when you just have standards that apply across the board anyway, to the extent that that makes sense. But... Yeah, so that's what we would look at as part of the redevelopment strategy. And then, the land use plan obviously becomes the task six, which is the next major component, and would incorporate the various strategies, and then implementation. And in implementation, we think needs to be a major chapter, and it needs to really provide that framework, as we mentioned, for the roadmap for implementing this, as well as a zoning plan, which will show how the master plan regulations will line up with your zoning map and with your zoning regulations and what needs to happen to make that a reality. And then, we would also include an executive summary, and we are giving you the option of either doing it as a poster or doing it as an online story map, which would actually be something that would be interactive, where you could actually tell the story of the master plan on a digital platform, and then have the map come up, the future land use map come up, and potentially help to tell the story. I think it's kind of an interesting way of sharing the summary of the master plan to the public. So, that's another element. So that, in a nutshell, the final page shows the timeline. This is generally about a year-long process to go through and get the project complete from start to finish. So, any questions or comments or elements that you think should be included that haven't been included, or... All yours.
So Rod, there's a series of strategic initiatives, I guess you could call them, or areas of focus that the township trustees developed in the summer, and I'd like to forward those along to you. There are some of them that are kind of important, but maybe don't necessarily lend themselves to master plan, like things like fire protection, that kind of thing. But there are some other elements, you know, amenities, parks rec, of course, Tech Village is in there, restaurants, retail, those kind of things, that if we could, you know, work those in where they have kind of a focus in the master plan, I think that could, that could really help. Also, there's appeal, you know, appeal of the appearance and appeal, so.
Okay, great. That's, that's all part of the coordination between the township board and the planning commission, which is great.
How does the Tech Village fit into this? Is it more of something that's referenced in here?
Right. It would, we would fold in the work that's been done as a sub, you know, we're not going to spend a lot more time on it, because you've pretty much got that where, I think, from a planning perspective, but it would be folded in and incorporated, the work you've already done, as part of the master plan to reflect what the vision is for that area.
Yeah, and there'll be goals and objectives for that area, of course.
Those will be carried forward, yeah. And then, to the extent they need to be tweaked, but yeah, there, I don't expect a whole lot of additional work in that area, but that would certainly be...
Yeah, it's an important area that we'd like to see develop, so.
Right.
Proceeding, do we need to make a recommendation to the township board, or where do we go from here? I mean...
I think it would be important to, that obviously the township board's going to have to authorize this from a budgetary perspective as well as moving forward with it. So I think it would be important to ultimately, yeah, ask for that.
I would put it this way. If the commission is comfortable this evening, after the presentation and knowing what you have and the work that you've done in the past on moving forward, you have a full proposal here, and there is a full proposal. I don't think the fee is in here, but that would be conveyed to the board, of course. But if this is a scope, and as it's been discussed, that the commission is looking to move on, then you would, in fact, want to take a recommendation, and you'd be welcome and it'd be appropriate to do it tonight, or whenever you're comfortable with it. If there's some things that you'd like to see brought back and added and understand them better or differently than you do tonight, that you'd want to make sure you're comfortable with, then you could ask for that. But if you're comfortable and you think you're ready to go, and this is reflective of what the commission's discussed and what you think would make for, at the end of the day, a good master plan product, then it'd be time to make a recommendation to the board.
I think this is broad enough and comprehensive enough. Got some flexibility in here, too, as we move along. Discussion standpoint, but...
Yeah.
I wouldn't have it...
Great.
I got a question, if I may, regarding, you know, the scope of work we have here and what the, what the potential cost will be. Guess maybe I have to ask Mr. Mansour what your thoughts are and your colleagues on the board from a funding perspective.
So, the board, I think, recognized this based on recommendation, maybe earlier from this group, that we were going to go through a major revision, and I'm pretty sure that we've put funding in the budget for it. So, I can't recall off the top of my...
That's good. I didn't know if we had that as a line item.
Yeah, I think it's in there, and so I think that that's a...
So it will not come as a surprise to the trustees?
No, it will not.
Okay, good.
We're a stingy group, but you know.
Well, that's good.
In your experience, are there better times of the year to get public participation?
Yes, I would say...
February, yeah.
Right now's probably not it.
This is not a good time for the kiosk component of this. You're going to want to make sure that if people are going to read posters and do whatever, it's during a time of year when they're going to be out moving around.
Yeah, you know, typically, you try to avoid anywhere from November, middle of November to about the middle of February. People are busy with a lot of things. They've got stuff going on, and then the weather's bad. But, and the way this is actually working out will probably be in the decent weather months and the better time of the year to get public participation once we're into this, so.
So does the school season have any, or the vacation season?
You know, I would say August is not a good time. The school season itself isn't necessarily problematic. I feel that if you're, if you're in late July or August trying to have an open house, you might have a little bit of a challenge, because that is a busy time for people to be out of town. But if you're before that, or if you're in the fall, you're usually, as long as you're not too late into the fall, you're okay. Yeah. Make a motion.
Like to make that motion?
I'll move that we recommend to the board that they adopt the proposed scope of work for the updating of our master plan.
Motion by Ms. Coulter. Support for that motion?
I'll support.
Mr. Lloyd. I'm not telling her. Mr. Goldie. Any other discussion? Nothing. A vote is in order. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes eight zero. All right, is that it for master plan?
That's it for master plan.
Good, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, have a question for Rod.
Yes.
Not related to the master plan, but through the accomplishment memo that you put out, that you sent us. Did we not have a joint planning commission township board meeting this past year?
I thought we did.
Because it shows zero.
Yeah, I was thinking there might have been one, too, but I couldn't remember if that was this, you know, was it this year, or was it the end of last year?
I think it was in seventeen, the...
Early part.
No, I don't think so. I think it was...
I'm wondering if it was in sixteen, it just feels...
No, 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 it's definitely in seventeen. Definitely in seventeen.
So you think there was one?
Yes, the township board inviting the planning commission in, and some media report, fall report, something like that. You're stealing my thunder, but yeah.
Mr. Chair, would this be an appropriate time just to briefly go through this?
How about we, we'll hit you committee report here.
Do it on the planner's...
It won't be long. So that takes us to committee reports, Mr. Mansour.
So, speaking of joint meetings, the township board would like to have a joint session with the planning commission. Tentatively, we'd like to have that scheduled for March 27th. So I don't know if, how that might fit Rod in with the ability to get things done, and maybe that's a time to use to talk about the master plan in a little more detail. But that would be appropriate if we can get things done. I know that there's a long process here, so the quicker we can get going on it, we'd like to do that.
What was that date on?
March 27th. It's the fourth Tuesday meeting of March, the township. We're trying to organize that fourth Tuesday meeting to be taking a look at more forward planning items as opposed to operational issues, so this fits in nicely with that approach.
Is that 7:00 P.M.?
Yep, 7:00 P.M. If we feel, on the other hand, that it needs a more focused session, a different time slot, something like that, then, you know, recommendation coming back would be, would be fine.
Just to the chair, if we can, if we get authorized to move forward on this pretty quickly, that actually would work out pretty well, that timing to have that kickoff. So that's, that's, that could work out great, perfect.
That's, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Brings us to planning and zoning. I guess, does Mr. Lloyd have anything?
I would just want to let everybody know that I am extremely excited to be here and working with you, of course, but also with Rod and the good folks from Giffords Webster. And the staff that we have here is really quite tremendous in, you know, in addition to just the planning activities, working with and directing the activities of the building department, as well as code enforcement, I think will help to bring a lot of these issues together. You know, we talked a little bit about signage and banners and non-permitted types of signs and banners and stuff, and those, those are issues on a daily basis for us. So there's a, there's a relationship that I hope to be able to communicate to this body, the board, as well as the ZBA and others, and of course, the staff, about the importance and the relationships that we have with regards to land use. Coming up in March, I think it gives us all a great opportunity to really kick something really special off, so looking forward to that.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We, the planning commission, have prepared a brief resume of our background, and I would ask that you would do that and provide it to the commissioners.
How brief? That's pretty long.
One page is fine.
Okay, I can, I don't think anybody has longer than half a page.
Giffords bio.
That's right. Good to go.
I'm happy to do that, and thanks for asking. Sure.
Guess that brings us to Mr. Arroyo, then.
You guys are very fortunate to have Mark working with you. He's, he's a great guy. He's, we're just, I mean, we're sorry to see him go, but we're really going to be happy that we get to continue working with them with one of our, one of our favorite clients, too. So it's, I think it's a win-win situation, and you guys are going to be in good hands having him as your planning director.
Oh, gosh, you say that to everyone.
No, I don't. Check the minutes. So a couple of things under my item here is, one is the annual report, and so this is something that you technically should be forwarding to the township board every year, and so we put this together for you to review, and we're here for your comments. So we already have the one comment on the, there was one joint meeting that we missed. And also, to clarify, I know there was a, Alan, your appointment, does that, is there a specific date that should go in there, or should it just be open-ended? What do you, I'm not quite sure what, how to change it.
Excellent, excellent. I mean, my understanding is it's open until the township supervisor...
Supervisor makes a change. So, yeah, so probably yours would just be...
Effective probably January 17, and then be it.
Yeah, so just, okay. We'll just maybe just take the date out. We'll just put the date out and keep it off of that one, because it's so different from the other one, so we'll just, but thanks for bringing that to our attention, too. Just as a summary, what this does is it provides an overview of what the planning commission's all about. It talks about your staff, it talks about the consultant you work with, has the roster, and then it goes through your activities. It talks about, you had 27 development applications, which included 12 zoning board of appeals applications. There is a development review map, which we think is really handy at the last page. It actually goes through, and it shows you all the development reviews by category, where they are in the township. And we did this for you last year as well, and it's, it's nice to see on an annual basis where the development's occurring, what kind of development it is. So all of those items are identified on here as well, so you can see it visually. And then we describe briefly what the various site plans, special land use rezoning, PUD, ZBA cases were, and then zoning updates as well, focus on technology village districts, which was one of your major planning functions this year, looking at residential open space, wireless communications, and then medical marijuana, or all other zoning amendments that occurred throughout the year. And then you also created a development review guide this year that included flow charts, up-to-date forms, and it's been, I think, a real asset for your, it's on your website, and it's available for use by the developers and by the public to better understand the process as well. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Comment?
Go ahead.
Could you provide a larger, more clear map?
Oh, sure. This is, this was, this is prepared so that it can be at any size as a PDF, but if you would like, do you, you want 11 by 17 copy of it?
That would be fine.
Yeah, we can print those out and...
Yes, it would be good.
And certainly, if, if and when this is sent to the trustees, I would include that map.
In the larger format, sure. I absolutely will do that. And I think it actually would be appropriate for the planning commission to make a motion to forward, if you're comfortable with it, forward the annual report to the township board with the changes duly noted.
All right, I'll make that motion. Support. Hold on. Okay, I got, we got a motion by Mr. Brown, supported by Mr. Yancho. We got some further discussion.
I've got a question. I guess, can you confirm the number of meetings? This says that we reviewed 13 site plans, but it says we only had four meetings. It seems awful light. We wouldn't typically review three...
Which, which, are you looking at the site?
Page two, under site plan reviews, says 13 site plans were reviewed by the Site Plan Review Committee 2017. But then if you go to the next page, page three, it says Site Plan Review Committee, number of meetings, four. It doesn't seem right. I don't, we don't typically review three items at each meeting. I think we had more than four meetings this year, especially earlier in the year.
Yeah. So I guess... Based on that, you might want to double-check the number of meetings on, on the others as well.
Okay, we'll do that.
Somebody did point out the township board and planning commission joint meeting, maybe there's, might have been one earlier in the year.
I have a quick question, if I might.
Please.
And actually, it goes to Rod and to the commission also, but do we do a review of the master plan on an annual basis?
No, they, the, the planning commission has, on a fairly regular basis, I don't know if I would say annual, but close to an annual basis, looked at implementation.
Okay.
So not a review of the plan, but what are our action items, and what could we be doing to implement it? So they've been really good about that.
I asked because I don't, I didn't hear anything mentioned about that in here. And so it would be nice for that annual report, I would think, to reflect whatever discussions you might have had regarding the master plan, because otherwise, it's not documented that on, other than in minutes.
Do you recall whether or not that happened this year? I know you did it in 2016.
Could we have a, one more, could I have that again, please? What was the question?
The review of the implementation of the master plan, where you talk about implementation items, did that happen in 2017? I know it happened in 2016.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I, one of the things I did look up in minutes here, there was a joint meeting on March 28th.
March 28th.
And the main thrust of that meeting was actually a review of the annual report from the, like, the previous year.
Okay, excellent, okay, good. Thanks for giving me that info.
So we had a motion to forward this with the revisions that we talked about. Other discussion? If not, a vote would be in order, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes eight zero. Okay.
There's one last comment, that's, in the zoning amendments, you know, we're, this year, we're going to address the temporary signs and signs near I-75 Highway.
Interesting.
Yeah. So that requires homework.
Yes. The other item that I wanted to bring to your attention, and it came to us late, so there's nothing formal in your packet, but we were forwarded a copy of the City of Grand Blank's master plan, they've just updated theirs, it's in draft form, and it's.
The City of Grand Blank, or?
City.
Or Burton?
No, City of Grand Blank.
Okay.
Yeah, it just came in, like, I think it was last week, just, you know, you can get, I don't know if you, did you get a copy forwarded to you by, because I don't know why that didn't get forwarded, because it was in the material that we sent to you, but just a couple of notes I have, I mean, there's not, there's no major changes, it's a fairly basic update to the city's master plan. They have a couple of goals that I think might be worth noting, for example, they note the need to promote a community-wide land use plan that emphasizes their downtown uses in the nearby areas of the city and the Township should complement the downtown area rather than compete with it, and there's an action plan item that says coordinate land use planning items and decisions along community borders with the Township to ensure objectives of both communities are considered, and I know you've often included items like that, too, there's a good working relationship there. They've also specified as one of their strategies is to work with the Township, General Motors, and interested community groups to develop a plan for the needs of the landowner, desires of the community, and complements the downtown in terms of the GM property, and they've actually identified that as a mixed-use campus abutting the Township, where on your plan, it's designated for light and general industrial next to where Heritage Park is, so I think that's going to be one of the areas we're going to be exploring a little bit in the master plan, is what to do with that, so I thought I would just bring that to your attention. They're also looking to kind of expand their corridor commercial areas along Saginaw closer to McCannlish, and that's, that's, in terms of what we identified with a brief review in the short period of time we had, those are just some highlights, so I just thought I'd bring that to your attention. If you, we'll make sure that that gets forwarded to you, and if you have any other comments you want to provide to us, anything you think is, needs to get transmitted, just send it, maybe send it through email to Mark, and maybe copy Jill on that, and, but we'll make sure that gets forwarded to you, and make sure you get that. So that was the last item I had, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Arroyo? Next item would be zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Brown?
Nothing.
No meeting?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Site Plan Review, we had no meetings again this month, so it's two months ago.
Bring up an item, I wasn't sure where to bring it up. I drove past the new Starbucks on, you know, Hill Road there, and they have a sign which looks like it's at least ten feet tall, which seems to me would exceed the requirements for monument signs.
Give me input there, Mr. Brown?
Or was there a variance on that?
I do not, I know that the signage for the drive-through was denied, and I saw the same, same sign that you saw, where it has the ability to list multiple tenants, and I went, how'd that get up there?
Are you, you're not talking about a monument, a new sign, you're talking about them reusing the old pylon?
Yeah, it was the existing one.
If that's, pardon? If that's what it is, what they've done is they've.
You're right.
They, they didn't change the area, they painted it, updated it a little bit, but it was a non-conforming sign, it was allowed to stay.
Okay.
Yeah, and they just moved around some of the tenant.
But it looks like you can have multiple tenants.
And there are, and Starbucks is up at the top, big, big sign up at the top, and then the other tenants are listed below that.
Okay.
That's what happened there.
Okay, next item on our agenda is a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman?
I have one question, and ask you guys if, you guys have heard this, because I've heard this around the Township, Hill and Belsey, have you ever heard somebody roundabout? Where did that come from?
I heard a rumor.
Yes, it's true, it's true.
Where was that, I never heard that.
That's, that comes from our friends at the Road Commission.
When is that going to happen?
Apparently, there's a, there's a, at certain times of the day, there's a long lineup.
Oh, it's bad.
Going north on Belsey to Hill, so there's about a, apparently, a $1.2 million roundabout being planned for that, I don't know exactly when it's going to start, somehow, since it's like late this year.
Is it going to be able to fit in with no, like, no taking homes?
Apparently, it will fit within.
In the Township, I know Paul had an article, and it in the Grand Blank.
Yeah, we, we had some small contribution to that, twenty-six, twenty-seven grand, something like that, not much.
To the whole thing, yep. It's not a rumor, that's a fact. I assumed it was, I just hadn't heard it, but it does say something, yes.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, making a motion that the meeting be adjourned?
Motion by Mr. Bandersky to adjourn, support by Mr. Goldie, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero, we are adjourned at eight thirty, eight p.m.